Alright, sorry about the heat. We're on generators, so there's no A C. But we're having a meeting, so. This is all of us. Thank you for coming. So let's get started. We'll move to agenda item number two, which is consent approval of plan and commission minutes from June 12th, 2024. If you guys get an opportunity to review those. Get on one typo in them, in the public comments. It says agreed, where it should say agreed. On the last page of the minutes. So if we can fix that, that's the only correction I had. And if there's nothing else, none others, I will make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 12th, 2024 as corrected.
I will second that motion.
Alright, um, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, then moves us to item number three, which is a discussion action recommend grant preliminary plat approval for Gardner Grove subdivision located approximately 736 West Harrisville Road. Kenny, can you introduce this one for us?
Yes, um, I just would like to take a brief moment to inform council member, or excuse me, the commissioners, that we lost a member of the HHI family this weekend in a tragic accident. And so we'd like to offer our condolences to the HHI family and to Regina Hokinson as they have a hard transition ahead of them. So we'd just like to acknowledge that this evening, as this was a
Thank you.
sensitive item on our agenda this night, tonight, so.
A member of our community.
Yes, absolutely. So in your packet is the engineer's memo. There are a number of red line items on plat itself. Nothing that has any concern of staff, but just corrections to language or specifying, um, different, yeah, different elements. The applicant's engineers here to address any questions that the commission may have, and we also have our public works director available. If you have any questions regarding the plat. The engineers requiring that the Weaver County surveyors office sign off on the plat, that they address all the red line comments. They include the plat narrative notes and curve table. They include the dimensions and locations of the public utility and drainage easements. And the proposed land swap with the boss's family will need to be finalized.
What's the size of that triangle?
Uh, I don't know that it's called out.
Is that dark?
Two points next seven.
So it's this darkened area here. I don't know that we have a square footage. Do you have a square footage, Justin?
It was roughly in the previous discussion around fourteen hundred square feet. So very minimal. But again, it actually was, the square footage received by the residents was actually a little bit more than the
What was taken?
than what was taken, so. And it just cleans up that line to be a straight line.
And I'll ask the rep to go through there.
Yes.
Yeah, that is an unusual thing is the subdivisions these days.
And then the the ponds and ditches need to, and any wetlands need to be identified. And the engineer has a note that if this Lorraine Lane is not going to be constructed at the beginning, that maybe they leave that off of the plat. So that may update, so that those improvements don't have to be escrowed to record the plat. So that may be a change that is made before final approval.
That would leave us with only one entrance and exit.
Yes, it'll be the main road here. And then this would be our remaining parcel lot. And the north parcel would be lot three.
Alright.
That's what our staff is recommending, so that we don't have to require the amount of escrow for the road construction.
And is the ditch being piped? Is this, is being piped off?
Eventually, the ditch will be piped as they work with western irrigation.
Okay.
Um, that is the intent.
When that was happening relative to the subdivision, since it's on the op saying it will be piped. So, okay. Thank you. You guys have questions for the engineer? Concerns with this? There's a lot of dimensions missing. Fourteen hundred square feet isn't too much. Are you guessing the boss's family's on board with that swap?
They've had communication with the bosses. It's actually, I believe, giving them, oh, there it is. It says thirteen sixty-five right there on the plat, square feet. There. It's to align that road at a better angle to come into seventeen fifty.
Yeah. Is that angle of seventeen fifty what we want for the city property too? They line that up with where that road is?
Yes, this, this section is, will be the entrance off of Highway eighty-nine to the city.
Right, just if they turned it a little bit, then it wouldn't line up and we'd have to jog the road in the city's property.
We've been working with them for quite a while to make sure the alignment is sufficient for the city's property as well to come in at the south corner.
Well, I'd like to hear from the engineer, so please.
You bet. So my name's Brian Campbell with the S I Engineering. And here representing the Hokensons tonight with the property.
So the second road going in there, is that going to be a public road, a private road?
It would be a public right of way. It would be dedicated to the city. That's why, um, we're kind of deciding the timing of that, because we would have to escrow for the improvements of that road.
Okay.
As far as their property goes, the timing's not super critical. The, the critical element, of course, is getting the plat recorded, so that then we can dedicate the city road to the city.
Yeah, right.
The timing of the other pieces, um, you know, with the recent events, probably kind of shift and change a little bit, but we still want to kind of push at some pace forward to where, like I say, we can get that road dedicated to the city.
And how, why is that road?
So, um, the dimensions, of course, won't be added on that, but at this time, I think we were at a sixty foot right of way, I think, on that. Does that sound right?
It was wider towards the highway, wasn't it?
Go ahead.
Just one second. On seventeen fifty, up to that intersection, it is an eighty foot right of way.
Correct.
And then the, the
Lorien.
Lorien Lane will be a sixty foot standard city right of way.
So it's not one of the fifty or fifty-five?
No, it'll be, yeah, because we're on, yeah, with the recent zoning change that happened in there, it's not going to be residential. It'll be, you know, commercial, manufacturing. And so we are anticipating a little bit, you know, bigger traffic, larger vehicle traffic, if you will, not large quantities of traffic, but larger vehicles.
Vehicles, and they want to make those turns.
Exactly, and have access in there and not crowd these roads.
Wanted to make sure, because if you make them a private road and then it's manufacturing, then it's difficult for access.
Absolutely, yes, so, and we, like I say, we've been working on city engineering and city planning, and we understand that that road would need to be a dedicated road to the city with all the improvements.
Do you know if there are any wetlands or ponds that are going to complicate this on the front?
The ponds, they want to keep as is, so they're not trying to mitigate or change any of the ponds that are out there now. Any of the existing wetlands that are out there now, um, they're not planning on changing with any of the new development. Most of them, as you know, are, uh, south of the existing canal that's there. And that portion, they're not planning on changing at all with this. So there may be some other areas that we might have to identify based on the comments from the city that haven't been identified today, but they'd be small and minor, and we'd probably just keep them the way they are.
Okay. So other than that, most of the notes from the engineer are fairly straightforward.
Exactly, yeah. We're not, yeah, we're not worried about them, yeah, at all.
No, are you worried about UDOT giving them an access for that second road?
It's, we've already talked to UDOT about it, and it's already been approved.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Sometimes UDOT doesn't like giving roads.
No, and we kind of negotiated that one with the seventeen fifty that they were on board with.
Okay.
A negotiation might be too hard of a word, but we did discuss it with them, and they're okay with that second access. As far as utilities go, with the moratorium on the road, city engineering has ran the calculations. And if we tie into the city waterline in seventeen fifty and run it down, we won't have to loop that line, and we won't have to tie into eighty-nine with our new waterline, so it won't make a full loop. It'll just come off of seventeen fifty and provide enough pressure for that area. And same with the sewer. The sewer will be deep enough in seventeen fifty that we can yeah, access on seventeen fifty. And then the other option with the sewer as well, as you know, the development across the street, the developer there is supposed to bore a sewer into that little Utah, or the UDOT triangle piece that's there on the corner of us, and then we could access sewer in there as well.
I think that addresses all of my concerns. Thank you.
Of course. Any other questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
That's great.
Yeah.
Appreciate your clarification there.
Absolutely, yeah, and we'll work with city staff through the comments. And like I said, there's nothing that concerns us. It's just kind of clarification of those that's moving around. Yeah, it could be, so.
But, yeah.
That's good.
In motion.
Yeah, right. My motion to approve or forward along a positive recommendation or to grant preliminary platter, excuse me, yeah, regard to Grove subdivision located approximately 736 West Harrisville Road into the X.
That'll be subject to the engineer's memo. That's an agency.
That's exactly where I was going next year. Uh, subject to the city engineer's memo dated July third, twenty twenty-four. And I think that's it.
I have a little second, but all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
That moves us on to agenda item number four, which is discussion action recommend grant preliminary plat approval for Heavenly Roads Phase One located approximately twenty-one fifty north, five hundred west. Jenny, will you please introduce this one as well?
Yes, thank you, commissioners. So is everyone familiar with where this is located?
I am. It's right next to Orion.
It's on the west side of Orion Junior High?
It's pretty close.
The zoning is actually grandfathered, it's outlined in the contracted planners' memo here for R three zoning. Uh, it was repealed, I've been with the city twenty years, it was repealed before I started.
See, I've never heard of the R two.
It's been quite a while, so we had to dust off the ordinance and bring it forward to make sure that we were following the ordinance. There are a couple of discrepancies that are outlined here in the planners' memo regarding the total acreage, what we were able to calculate and what they submitted. There's a little over an acre difference, so we need them to sort through their calculation there so that we can determine the appropriate open space requirements. They, the planners requested that the plat indicate the building setbacks and that the height requirements are compliant with the R three zone. The parking calculations for both tenant parking and visitor parking stalls and any amenities we identified on the plat as well. So those are the planning review items. The other memo is the engineer's memo. Did Weaver County Surveyors reviews required? All the red line comments on the plat need to be addressed. The, the engineer wants to ensure that the private driveways are wide enough to provide turning space for emergency vehicles. And any additional parking in the private areas is encouraged and not on the public streets. You'll notice there's a combination of public and private roads in this development. To include the dimensions and locations of the public utilities and drainage easements. And there is a, a type of swap going on with a current detention basin. If you look at the
Right.
lower area here, this is currently where a detention basin is located, and they are proposing a lot be used, included in this subdivision, and the detention be moved north to this parcel A area. And all indications from the engineer show that that is fine.
Is that still going to give them enough open space if we do that?
I believe so, with, well, we have to have the acreage corrected so that we know. But assuming that they have the right calculation, then yeah, it would give them the appropriate open space necessary.
I like that they stuck with the four in a row too, because I remember when we were in project management and looking at it, it could let them do eight in a row with the ten homes and stuff too. Just because it's a super old zone that we haven't ever used in a long time. So the one engineer's memo that I'm a little concerned about is the one up with the road on the school district property, where it says you have to add a turnaround. Is that going to encroach on the development too much?
This area?
So at the end of the road, it says it's a dead end road, and we need to have turnaround.
So it's a little tricky here. Um, I'm not sure, I can't speak to why the comment says a turnaround, and don't believe we have any units that would require fire access there. Are you more familiar with that area, Justin?
Yeah, um. That doesn't, from my last understanding, the length didn't require, it wasn't more than a hundred and fifty feet to the intersection, because there's only the one home and then the intersection.
That just confused me as to why.
Maybe Matt didn't quite see that.
Okay.
Quite the same way, so we'll have that discussion. I think that's one, again, I don't believe they will
They do have to, that would
Essentially, if, if they needed it, they needed it.
Before.
With the other development, not this development.
Okay. So that's off the map and really shouldn't be in this.
Yeah, yeah, I think that was just kind of a, an oversight.
Leftover.
Okay.
And so we'll, we'll clean that one up, but yeah, that, that should not affect
This development.
this development. And again, it would be very difficult, because the, the way the property line is for the school is actually halfway that roadway, so you could couldn't do a turnaround anyway unless you kicked it all onto this property. I, it just, I think it was just an oversight on a corner.
Property front of the school that turned around and was present.
Well, and I believe, and I don't know that we had this discussion, but I believe that these are set, these units are set back, so that if there was any potential connection, those units are set back far enough that they would have an appropriate setback on.
Essentially, the twenty-one sixty north rail that's deemed private, that was actually done in consideration of the city for that if that road ever did come through twenty-four, four twenty-five, that that actually, it'd be a pretty easy connection.
On both of those.
And then become a, a public road. So that was a concession that the developer made, and it overall, this is probably the best plan we've seen come through on a city, on a staff level.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you. So any other concern is the width of those private roads and making sure emergency vehicles, but that's multiple times on there, so I'm sure that will get addressed before it goes to final.
Yes, it'll be required to have a letter from Northview Fire signing off on it.
Saying they can actually drive through it. That's good. I haven't dealt with R three zone ever, so. This is a new project. So the one, the other question I had, is there a lot of typos in the name of this place?
Yes, so we would like
Is it spelled with an E or an A?
We would love the developer to clarify whether they had a unique spelling for Heavenly Roads, or if it was just misspelled on the application.
I'd have to ask the engineer.
Alright.
He spelled it.
We're assuming it was a typo. We've corrected it on ours. But if you want it to end with an A N L Y, just let the city know. You're the ones that named the subdivision.
That's what's several times on our drawing. It has that A in there. So there's a few.
We'll get that corrected before it's recorded.
And if not, it won't be spelled that way?
That's up to the developer, yeah.
It's a name.
Any other comments or questions from staff?
So is, is all of the space there, um, north of four eighty west, is that all going to be considered open space, granted that we look at all the acreage eventually? Is that what?
This area here?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, this is common area. Uh, they don't have their amenities listed. That was a note from the engineer to please list the amenities if they have playgrounds or other things for the developer that are not shown on here. But yes, this would be, this is the protection that we're talking about in case future connectivity was available for four twenty-five west.
Are there other open spaces other than the detention basin?
There, all the common area outside of the units is listed as open space calculation.
I have a question for the developer. Are these front doors towards the common space or front doors towards the driveways?
Hold on, both.
Both?
Okay. Where's the dog? I believe the road runs in back of them there.
That private.
The private one.
That's where your front door will be?
On the others, it's towards the road.
Okay. So on those ones.
They're extra wide roads, and that's why hence the name. And, uh, we not only gave you, I believe, Justin, you can tell me how many feet of black dog we gave you? I can't remember you, uh, but we give you an extra eight feet.
Yeah.
In addition to the sixty. So we got rid of the part by way, and it's that's why they named it that name. It won't feel a lot like townhomes using it.
Do we have any proposed pictures of what the townhomes may look like?
Uh, no.
None so far.
There's no requirement for that.
I do have one if you'd like to look at it.
Sure, I would like to. I'm so glad that I'm seeing some open space there. I see far too many of these designs.
Orion, please assist.
That's good. We like open space here. Okay.
That's what we got. That might change something.
Great. And so what, what's the square footage of?
Well, typically, they go from two thousand to thirteen, and these are about sixteen foot. They're right in the middle, and they all have three bedrooms, two bed, two car garage.
See this one, it's going to take a two, is that how you want it spelled?
Oh, I was. Is that you only complain on that?
That's, that's one of the main ones, despite a field where it's just something is done, but as far as the development goes.
Yes, it does have.
I think it works, yeah.
That's very interesting.
Before it's recorded.
This one over those two.
Just a reminder to mention that this is the first step. Now that we've kind of reversed our subdivision ordinance, this is the first step of approval, which is the last.
Thank you. Yeah, the, the challenge for us is that other than when we first review it, this is our only chance to really start asking questions except for
When you have a chance to project management, yeah.
So thank you for indulging us, we try to understand this better.
Yeah, I think, I don't have any other issues, because both mottos get addressed.
Yep.
I agree, that would be good, so.
Sure. I will motion to recommend to grant preliminary plat approval for Heavenly Roads Phase One located approximately twenty-one fifty north, five hundred west, uh, as long as it is in accordance with the city engineer's memo dated July third, twenty twenty-four, and the city planners' memo dated July third, twenty twenty-four.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That moves us to agenda item number five, which is discussion action recommend grant preliminary or final site plan. Is it preliminary and final or preliminary? You know, it says preliminary final site plan approval for Bailey Five Business Condos. Commercial site plan located approximately twenty-three forty north, Highway eighty-nine. So this is the one that's coming back because it expired.
Correct.
Yeah.
So they're finally ready to do something.
This is a reapplication for the previous approval for these business condos. There are very few comments from the city engineer on this.
Done with this a few years ago, so.
And they've left everything the same in their application. There haven't been any changes. And they've already received their permitting through UDOT. Um, in fact, they've begun construction in the UDOT right of way because of the resourcing project. So, yep.
Okay.
They're ready to move forward as quickly as possible.
Brian, are you familiar with this one? Came through before your time. So Kenny, can you introduce it for his benefit?
Sure.
I had, and I looked there when it came through the first time.
This is approximately located at twenty-three fifty north, Highway eighty-nine. It's just south of where the Jolvis Bar burned down on Howie. And so they're proposing a number of business condos with an access off of Highway eighty-nine. Originally, they were working with a developer to the north, um, but that development has stalled. And so they're just asking for reapproval of the same concept plan they had before. And that's why it's listed on your agenda as preliminary and final.
Right, so that's treasure fire equipment, right?
Yes.
The white building?
Yes.
Yep.
That means they're all commercial spaces in the blue, every one. Blue space is another business or possibility. Sometimes they combine those things and have one business across multiple.
I believe they're built pursuit spaces, essentially, yeah. Depending on who wants to rent or lease, they'll accommodate this square footage thing.
See, I don't have any.
I don't have any questions either.
Hopefully, it happens this time you see it again in two years. It's, it's expired.
They're pretty imminent. They're out there working. No, we're going, I promise.
Good for you. That's awesome.
Like seeing things built when it gets approved, rather than
Yeah, you gotta treat it like when your wife gives you a yes. You gotta move, you gotta move fast. You don't hesitate.
Any issues, concerns?
Is there issues with this?
If I take this.
Let's help them on their way.
I will make a motion to approve, um, the site plan approval for Bailey Five Business Condos. Commercial site plan located approximately twenty-three forty north, Highway eighty-nine, subject to the engineer's memo dated July third, twenty twenty-four. And any other staff and agency requirements?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. That moves us on to agenda item number six, which is discussion action recommend grant approval of Ascension Lutheran Church subdivision amendment for property located at eleven oh five north, Washington Boulevard. Kenny, why don't you start us out with this one?
Alright, uh, this item has been underway for an ordinance as well. There is an existing Lutheran Church subdivision, and this is technically adjusting the lot lines between lots one and two. Lot two had no frontage on the road previously, and so the realignment of the lots has allowed the frontage access for lot two in the back. So there are very few comments from the engineer on his memo as well. Just submit the plan for the Weaver County Surveyors Office to review and provide a lot address on the plat. So this is
Lot four?
Once we do an amendment, they renumber the lots.
Okay.
So it will vacate lots one and two, and it'll become lot three and four after the amendment. Anytime we make an amendment.
And then you just won't be able to find one and two.
Right, they will discontinue those.
Okay.
So we vacated the utility easement that was previously on the lot two, and they're rerecording the easement as well as the access down to eleven hundred north. So this is the subdivision plat amendment.
It doesn't look like they actually need. It doesn't look like they actually need a second access, but what they're proposing, it'll still be through the same parking lot.
Yes, they'll need.
But I guess this gives it an address.
And they didn't have access technically.
Right.
The previous lot, so this will guarantee the access to that back lot.
Right, and the previous, the next agenda item is across the lot line, so they would have had to go across that for that, so.
We like to have it cleaned up for the second plan. And the applicant's engineers here to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Well, on the subdivision, they don't have many concerns unless we wanted to adjust the angle, which I don't think really makes sense. So any other concerns, any questions on this? On the plots themselves?
I found that kind of interesting too, how they're breaking it up like that. They obviously got some plans there somewhere.
So the next agenda items, the plans, I think at that point we'll have the questions, whereas right here, it just guarantees it access, gives it an address. And that's really all the engineer had, so.
Yeah. I agree with that.
If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion on this one.
Okay, right on. Well, I, I motion to grant approval to the essential Lutheran church for the subdivision amendment, property located in eleven-oh-five north Washington Boulevard, subject again to the city engineer's memo dated July third, twenty twenty-four and any other requirements.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That brings us to agenda item number seven, which is discussion, action, recommend, grant preliminary approval for family promise site plan for property located approximately eleven-oh-five north Washington Boulevard. Okay. Jenny, introduce what they're doing with this plat now.
So they're proposing to build a building here on lot two with shared access to the parking lot at the existing essential Lutheran church, but their parking will actually be on their site. The engineer's memo includes several comments on this site plan. The first one is to obtain final approval through Bonavista and Pine View for the water lines, to obtain final approvals from Northview Fire District, to provide a landscaping plan and to update the sewer plan to show a four-inch lateral being run from the building of the sewer elevation. And the four-inch lateral, lateral should connect to the main about Danhole, so he was identified that on the site plan.
So they have too deep of a line and too big of a line, that's the red lines on the comment, uh, that they're referring to.
To move the water service lines location to not be under the bottom of this tension pond, and to remove the striping of the existing parking stalls at the entrances so that the parking access is mortifying. To show the proposed contours of the grading plan and how runoff will be kept on site and not flow onto neighboring properties. And also the parking lot runoff will be directed to the detention basin. Show the detention basin calculations and clarify the elevations of the outlet pipe to screen between the commercial zone requirement in accordance with our code. And the last one.
And the last one was a stormwater pollution prevention plan.
Thank you.
And file a notice of intent with the state.
Perfect, thank you. And again, the applicant's engineer is here to address any questions that the commission may have.
You can come forward, please, and discuss this one. We'd love to. Questions for you?
Sure, Jim Flynn with Hanson and Associates, most of those items we've already addressed.
Okay.
But we're happy to entertain any questions.
So is there a reason why you don't want independent access for the second lot?
Yeah, it's okay if I step away from the.
That's fine.
We originally had, um, the original lot was right through here. Through here. And we actually originally proposed doing a separate driveway, but I believe the city, and I'm glad, glad they did recommend this, said it'd be redundancy to have two driveways right next to one another. So Lutheran church has been great to work with, so that's prime, the primary and only access will be right through here.
Okay. And the church, I'm sure, is okay with losing those parking spots that are going to become roadway access?
Yeah, on, on the updated plan, sheet two. We show striping, removing the striping on these stalls here. And so this is so it can function ultimately on its own.
So you don't aspire. And there's six parking spots as well as some of the. Not generally super full, but you have to drive through it in order to get to this one. Right. So the.
Then the four-inch fire line is, is there.
So the multiple pro, pros, future expansion areas, is there a reason they're included here or just to have them in the case you decide to amend it later?
It's, um, mainly for planning and grading purposes.
Okay.
Yeah.
At the moment, you wouldn't need those since they're not getting built, just eventually. Okay.
If you want to see something good, you want to look at the architect's plans. These are the boring civil plans, pretty spectacular.
The only red line I have on here was the water line going under the detention basin is to get moved, is the red line on the bottom of that page. Is there any issues with that?
I don't think there will be, this, um.
Moving it laterally?
This looks like a large pond, it's only two feet deep.
Okay.
And, um, we can easily get the four foot of cover going underneath it.
Okay.
We'll do whatever Matt says, but, um, in our response comments, we, uh, we are proposing to go underneath it.
Okay. And that's why the pipe has its unusual elevations as well, is because it's only for, only the two feet deep?
Yeah.
Okay. That makes sense then. Any other concerns?
Other than just landscape, any ideas on how they're going to landscape that? Uh, that's, I think, the fifth sheet. We're working with Pine View on, well, maybe not.
Didn't see one of the packet.
Yeah.
I don't think that came through in the first middle, I think that we had to post. You said new ones after we posted the agenda.
Okay.
So we haven't seen those ones, but that would be good to know, or at least have an idea of what's going in, so.
Sure, but I know, I know we prepared it, but I think it is.
That's okay.
So this, just a note, we did list this as preliminary and final, so if the commission feels comfortable only giving preliminary, we can do that tonight. This has to be subject to the subdivision amendment approval anyway. We can't allow the site plan to move forward until we wrap up all of the issues with the amendment on the subdivision.
Right.
Which will have to go through the administrative landies authority, so.
Okay.
If you're more comfortable, that is an option to do preliminary. If you're comfortable with final, that's up to the commission.
I'd like to see the grading in lines here before we go to final. Just, there's an elevation, so it's mostly minor stuff, shouldn't be hard, but.
Do you have the elevation views?
No.
Like your mark, or the, you can approach the. And the architect's here to explain any factors?
Well, he knows decent stuff. Do you have the, the landscaping one you mentioned, do you have that with you?
I think that's.
No, okay.
Let me see if I can pull that up if that's of interest to the commission.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to see that if it exists, if it doesn't exist, that's okay, but.
Wouldn't that have been sent over, Jim?
That would have been, uh.
He's sent over. Late?
Yeah.
So that's about it there, okay.
Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
There's more with their comments. I can motion to present preliminary approval.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, I will motion to grant preliminary approval for family promise site plan for property located approximately eleven-oh-five north Washington Boulevard, subject to the city engineer's memo dated July third, twenty twenty-four.
Subdivision.
Certain subdivision memo and amendments.
I second that.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That brings us to agenda item number eight, because we didn't follow the agenda today, which is discussion, action, recommend, grant preliminary or final approval for Elite Three manufacturing site plan for property located at approximately sixteen-oh-one north seven-fifty west. Jenny, what is this one about?
Thank you, permission. This is a project area location over here on seven-fifty west. It is south of the Saunders Construction and Storage Area, if you're familiar with. And the.
Thank you for coming, have a good evening.
The engineer's memo has very few comments related to this project as well. He's asking for final approval for Bonavista Water for the new culinary water service connection, final site plan approval for Northview Fire and to install a four-inch graded cobble in the retention basin as opposed to decorative gravel that they have listed. So there's very few comments from the engineer on this approval as well.
So manufacturing building in the manufacturing zone?
Yes.
And on the front seven-fifty, this is the railroad tracks connecting?
Correct.
Yeah. The one business section, two, it shouldn't be an issue with traffic getting out of the one entrance, so, unless it's a business.
Yeah, they actually have the opportunity to loop their traffic because the.
Okay.
How much will seven-fifty be widened?
Just that I can. That is a, that is a good question. Essentially, anywhere north of the tracks, when, when it's all completed, um, to say the actual width, I'm not quite sure, but essentially think of, um, license lane. So one lane each way and then a middle lane as well. When turn gutters head off, that's been non-existent. And we're.
So once that happens?
In that process, four, five, maybe four, twenty, thirty. So it won't happen before twenty thirty, it'll happen within the proximate years of twenty-thirty-one, twenty-thirty-two, just how the federal funding works.
Right.
Okay.
Well, is there any concerns about this one? Brian, it's like the city's gear. Really any red lines on this one?
Yeah.
Just a time to clean it up and have it on site, yeah.
So. I don't really mind decorative gravel in the retention basin, but it shouldn't matter too much to change it since it's there for function, not decoration.
One other thing about that is that is a completely privatized detention basin.
Okay.
So yes, we'd like to see it to our four-inch city standard.
But they can do what they want.
It is completely privatized.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you for that clarification. I don't see how we connect into anything right up next to the tracks either, but. At least not until seven-fifty goes through. All right. Yeah, I mean, no red lines, very little coming from the engineers that's in the zone is supposed to be next to other businesses operating, so I don't see an issue with that. So if there's nothing else, I will make a motion to grant final approval for Elite Three manufacturing site plan for property located approximately sixteen-oh-one north seven-fifty west, subject to the engineer's memo dated July third and any other staff and agency requirements.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That brings us to agenda item number nine, which is public comment. This is your opportunity to please come up, state your name and share with us three minutes of what's on your mind.
Evening, uh, Martin Farrell. I reside here in Harrisville. I was also here last night in the meeting. And just to inform you, again, I have, uh, some information and it's regarding, uh, western irrigation.
Okay.
And with that, uh, as far as the, how many shares requirement on your developments per acreage and also, uh, and a letter or email that was sent out that is stating that there is to be no more stormwater entered into western irrigation canal. If I could give those to the recorder, if that's okay, again, for record.
Yeah. We've got still one to chat, if there was, we got those as well.
And then also, uh, on the item number three, uh, on the intended, or I can't say it, X LLC, anyway, uh, as far as piping the canal, uh, there has been nothing mentioned to western irrigation other than a couple of years ago when there was talk of, uh, development there. Uh, so there's, there's, we have no record of that as far as piping the canal. Also, there is a irrigation, uh, lateral that goes through that property and then into the city development, uh, on that, that I, I, that needs to be addressed as well. And then, uh, if we go down to item number eight on the development there, you talked about a retention pond there, uh, so my question would be there.
Hey Mark, where, where were you when you say eight?
Except on here. I would think on that.
Okay, it's the, uh, development on seven-fifty west and the retention pond there, uh, whether that is going to hold the water or if there's an overflow going to go somewhere, uh, but that would reflect into the western irrigation, uh, going into there, which we best not to do that. Any questions for me?
This is public comment where you can listen, but no questions.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate that, that'll be important to understand.
There's no other public comment, no post-public comments, so move on to number ten, which is commission and staff follow up. Jenny?
So we'd like to inform the commissioners that we did have another resignation from the planning commission. Commissioner Elmer moved out of the city and is no longer eligible to serve on the planning commission, so the mayor's been taking applications for new planning commission applications and if, uh, we understand that we won't have a quorum in August, so we'll work speedily to have a new commissioner appointed if we can before that meeting, but please just be aware that we may have to cancel that meeting if we don't have a quorum.
So if anyone wants to sit up here and vote on staff, let the mayor know, you can become one of us. All right. It's good to know why he left since we've had so many dropouts lately.
He's a good person.
Let's see if that person finds...
Yes, further follow-up on this western irrigation, being that's going to affect quite a few developments going forward, so we have to make sure that the city engineer is aware of requirements with the canal.
Yeah, we've actually requested a formal meeting with western irrigation for all entities to meet together to discuss their request, but we haven't been notified that they're having a meeting yet.
Okay. Right, you've got a comment on that, we'll entertain that at this moment.
You'd like to?
Yes, yes, please, let's follow up on that.
Uh, we would be glad to meet with Harrisville City, not other entities. The other entities have addressed us, and we have talked to them, and we are in the process of working things out with them as well. Anyway, to go into, not to go into detail, uh, but we would be glad to meet with you, meet with Harrisville City, that is western irrigation and Harrisville City.
Thank you. Appreciate that comment and the follow-up, because that will, I mean, instead of effect a lot, we have a lot of western irrigation going through the city. Sorry, I'm delinquent. No, that's okay, thank you.
That's good, I think we're, we're good, thank you. Sounds like we're moving forward in the positive step.
Yeah.
Sounds great.
Any other follow-ups you'd be aware of?
Could I request a training?
Sure.
I would love to know was a transplant to this area. Where all the rivers are coming down, I know Justin knows, North Ogden, but Six Mile, I mean, all of these different designations, you know, where do they come from?
Where do they go?
Where do they split off in Harrisville? I would love it, would you like?
Sure. It's in our staff follow-up.
As I've expressed to council, I'll do the same explanation. Anytime any planning commissioner or council would like to go for a drive and just contact me, I'm more than willing to take you out. I can only take you out as one or two, I can't pick you up. As a quorum, not as a quorum, unless it's a, a meeting.
Will lunch be provided?
If you're bringing it.
And, and, we'll, we'll see if the powers that be say about that.
I think that'll be...
Take care of all on the city budget. But yes, um, I do have a, quite a vast knowledge of North Ogden, as I had ten years of experience there, um, and know exactly what cold water, which dugs into Four Mile Creek, how Six Mile Creek comes down through North Ogden, through North Ogden Canyon, so on and so forth. Anyways, um, also some other follow-up, if you've seen Drill By Two Thousand, Millennial Park is underway. Highly anticipating new bathrooms, new playground equipment, um, or lighting around the track, and quite a few amenities that have been promised, new sprinkling system leveling out.
Sidewalk along the, sidewalk along the road there?
Sidewalk along the road, it's, um, some of the other projects, the city is, and, hope pretty soon Two Thousand will be totally striped from the highway to the North Ogden border. Um, so they'll try to clear up, have lines down the road, same with behind the, uh, elementary school where we did the widening project. We are heavily anticipating by the end of this month, a completion of this sewer line into Ben London. And hopefully...
That glass can move forward?
Yeah, we'll move forward the first of August with the, the mill down on Obelane.
How many months has that gotten pushed back then? And how far into the fall is that going again?
Uh, they have a hard deadline, uh, the end of September.
So they're still going to finish it at the same time?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's, yeah, but there's, there was a, a deal between the contractor and the developer on some funds that the city and UDOT stayed out of. Anyways, that, that didn't push the pipeline back more than was contracted. They will have that all completed, um, if you guys drill...
Not get completed because it got delayed for the sewer?
If you've driven, driven by Washington Boulevard, so I did some creek developments going. Lot of development is starting to happen in Harrisville. So attribute that to you guys and being proactive in your thinking and looking forward for the city's betterment.
Alright, thank you for the follow-up. Any others from staff? Hello?
Thanks for the update.
And this is important, if you want that training, you have to test it. Learn where all the grease guy, like, did he run some of them too?
And you get lunch.
Busy for, uh, bring it.
Yeah. Run back.
But if there's no other follow-up, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Adjourned. For putting up with the work, everybody.
I get a hold of no power and no generators, so.